All right. I just want to make an announcement that Johnny Thoreau, our Vice Mayor, called and he had two people. He will not be here. He had good intentions, I'll tell you that.
What was it going to be?
We're going to have, we're going to start off by having a public hearing, but I'd like to, I would like to recognize two particular guests that we have here. And that would be Jimmy Carson and Wes Sayers. They're both running for Mariana's slot, and they're going to have a good, clean race, and either one of them will be good to work with. Okay, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearings.
All right, please, Mayor. We're going to have two public hearings tonight. The first one is on application number TA-13-000-002. I'd like to let everybody know that the City of Tifton has written the public hearing procedures as stands for the exercise of zoning powers of the California Department of laws, available to hand out in post-publicity hearing. The matter under consideration tonight is a text amendment to Chapter Four of the City of Tifton Land Development Code to delete the minimum setback requirements for residential zoning districts for vehicle sales establishments. Counsel, this time I'd like to address you with three questions related to conflict interest. Have any of these applicants or opponents to the applicant contributed at least $200 to a campaign or lecture in the past few years?
No.
Do you or any members of your family own property that would be impacted by this classification application, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
And do you or any members of your family have an interest in the business that would be impacted by this classification, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Prior to taking the public input, I'd like to ask Mr. Crowe if he would come forward and just briefly inform the public what's lost to this application.
We've received an application asking for a change in the Land Development Code relating to the location of vehicle sales establishments. It is determination that it is now set at 100 feet from a residential zone. This current setback requirement for vehicle sales establishment is a carryover from the previous code, which we changed in 2011, requiring assault control, sound, and noise, and light, illumination, unsightly signage, and such as that. All these points are covered under the current Land Development Code in different places now, so it's a duplicate of what's there. It is the opinion of staff that setback requirement is related to sales vehicles. Staff, it is no longer necessary to control unwanted characteristics previously associated with car lots and unnecessary restraint on local business and vehicle sales establishments. It is also the desire of the staff to patrol such things by what we call quarter zoning, which would be a situation of having a buffer zone of particular type of zoning between what are general business zones and residential zones. That's generally done with an NC, Neighborhood Commercial Zone area, buffer zone, and that is part of our plan overall, has been since we established the department, and slowly but surely we're working toward that. So even if this was rescinded as we're requesting that it be, or we recommended that it be, there would, we would be able to secondary instead of the buffers, which is what we're going to do anyway in the future. It's in future plans for the department, so. The plan is ours, recommendation. They had no consensus on this matter. All right.
No consensus, meaning they did not vote, or what's their vote?
As you know, Department of Procedures requires it to be a, someone to recommend something and then second it.
Aye.
And then have a vote.
Aye.
They had a recommendation, no second.
And died of the lack of second.
And it died of the lack of second.
I know about that.
Okay. That happens, you know, and so there was no second consensus, okay?
I have a question if you have. I'd rather err on the side of conservancy. I want to make sure that I don't violate any issues here. I don't have any actually represent some landowners who have used a location as a car lot that is currently on the market that would fall under this, it's within 100 feet. Should I accuse myself? It's not my property, but our company does represent, and I'm not saying that it's going to be sold to be used as a car lot, but it certainly could be because it has been in the past.
I think that may be appropriate.
Okay, I'm going to do that just to be sure there's no conflict there.
Right, so this is the public hearing. I'll hear from the applicants first, or anybody is in favor. If anyone is in favor of this application, you can come up and speak now.
Hi.
Okay.
After all, we're going to be interested in purchasing your property.
All right, if you want, just say your name and your address, and then please address counsel.
Hi, I'm Robert Parks, and I am interested in opening up a used car lot in a previous location that had a car lot there. It was knocked down. Some of the zoning routes have been changed, and I'm actually here trying to see if I can get it changed back to be able to build a car lot in that location.
Can you read it?
Robert Parks.
Counsel.
What's your address? 381.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else here that would like to speak in favor of the zoning classification, reclassification? Is there one here that would like to speak in opposition to this text amendment on the minimum setback requirements for vehicle sales establishments? I think that's all the public input, this portion of public input.
Yes, this portion, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the second public hearing. It's on application ZA-13-000-004. Again, I'll remind everybody that the City of Tifton has written public policies and procedures and exercise of zoning powers. You can copy that at this department's office, and a copy has been posted. This matter under consideration involves reclassification of tract of land located in the area of Old Omega Road and South Bridge Avenue from R-10 Residential to City MHP or Mobile Home Park, what is currently known as South College Circle Mobile Home Park. Again, I'll ask counsel, is, uh, do you?
Yeah.
All right, again, I'd like to ask this qualification question to the counsel. Have any of these applicants or opponents to the application, I believe this is by Mr. Crowe, contributed at least $200 to any campaign or lecture in the past year?
No.
Do you or any members of your family own property that would be impacted by this zoning classification application, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
And do you or any members of your family have an interest in business that would be impacted by this classification application, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
Again, prior to taking the public input, I'd ask Mr. Crowe if you would just briefly tell the public what's involved in this application.
I probably received a request for rezone the western portion of property located in tax parcel map T-3231, and a partial parcel there, and a partial parcel there, and a total parcel at T-32298. The request was to change the zoning from the current zoning of R-10 to what is now City of Tifton Mobile Home Park. The use of that property already was Mobile Home Park, it was part of the Mobile Home Park, the access was for the Mobile Home Park, and basically this would bring it in line to the current zoning for the City of Tifton because of use. It did not affect any residential properties in any way whatsoever because the lots were already split off, they just never had been changed in zoning. We did go before the City of Tifton Planning and Zoning Commission, met on the 8th of August, and did approve it to be, according to the recommendation, to change it from residential 10 to City of Tifton Mobile Home Park.
Questions? Yes, sir. All right, again, I would ask, is anyone here to speak in favor of the application? All right, is anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? I see no one who wishes to have an input on this matter, I'll ask this public hearing to close.
Public hearing is closed. Luckily, we didn't call the meeting to order, and thank everybody for coming out tonight. And we always start with a prayer and a pledge, and I've asked Mrs. Mariana to give us a prayer tonight. Once the prayer is finished, we will all face the flag and give the pledge of allegiance. Mariana?
Would you join me in prayer, please? Our gracious heavenly Father, we are thankful today for the blessings that you bestow on us every day. The fact that we can meet here as a group of citizens trying to represent our community the best that we can. We're thankful for other citizens who are willing to do this. We're thankful for citizens who have come out of interest in their community to be with us tonight. We ask that you would give us all strength and guidance as we make decisions tonight. We ask that you would always protect the military forces who are in harm's way, who are making the life that we have here possible. We thank you for the first responders who protect us in this community every day. We ask that you would be with each one of us, guide us and direct us in the decisions we make tonight, and Jesus, may we move on.
Amen. Thank you, Mariana.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation of all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may proceed. Now, we need to get up and form what Laura wants us to do, that's the approval of the council agenda. I'll accept the motion on that.
Mr. Thoreau, I make the motion that we approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Thank you. Your motion is second. Any further discussion?
I do have one discussion. Our Vice Mayor called me and asked that we table number nine until we could be present in voting this, Mr. Thoreau. If he wants to be present when I vote him, Mr. Thoreau?
Would you like to just amend my motion?
No.
Mr. Thoreau, make the motion that we accept the agenda as submitted, with the exception of item number nine.
Do we even wait till we get to that, or do we do it now?
Well, I think that we can approve the agenda as it is, and when we get to that item, then we make a motion to table that at that time.
And then I'll leave my motion as it.
Motion as it was.
We need to reconsider that section.
Yeah, thank you, dear, I'm thinking about that, but I wondered. Okay, so we got the original motion, and a second. Any further conversation? Seeing none, all in favor, consider my raising right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. We've got the swearing in of the Historical Preservation Commission members, Mr. Jeffrey Dan, Jeffrey can lead me up front.
Of course, I'm the one that comes down, but you're all the ones that are there.
Mayor.
You don't have to come from sideways so we can get them a picture.
(Laughter). Like me, if you got that thing, the lens and that, well, it wouldn't perfectly live. Here, your lens, oh, that's right here, behind you.
(Inaudible).
I don't have to raise your hand until I get that. Okay. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and architically perform as a member of the Historical Preservation Commission of this city, and that I will support and defend and charge the City of Tifton below the Constitution and law and statute of rights and I shall act as a servant. I shall attend all leave to the body to which I have been appointed and my property is intended. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the City Council and the rules of disclosure outlined in the letter to you. Unless disqualified by the standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actively participate in all decisions of the body to be guided by. And you raise your right hand. I shall attend to city events and any training mandated by the State of Georgia. I shall also attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the City of Tifton, if you are. Global Board, sir. Give him a hand. (Applause). Hear that, the constable. My children, call. And let me just tell everybody, I don't want to broadcast this, but I'm 63 years old. I played drums most all my life, and I'm just tired of saying, huh? What'd they say? So I have to hear things in my, and I'm trying to get used to them, this door ringing, and I start to see you run out of the room screaming. I'm trying to do better, totally, I need it all. I'll be sending the bill to pay for it, too. So far, it's working good. I can hear myself breathing. Okay, you know, it's always a pleasure to get people in, and I know Jeffrey was here on other occasions that we were talking about stuff, and we all said, I should be a good member on XPC. So, you know, you've already got good memories, and we're just happy that you're going to be on there, and just thank you so much, Sharon.
Thank you.
Oh, we've got an update by Mr. Christian.
Come over in the corner. Good afternoon, City Council. Our office, as you guys know, provides technical assistance.
As you guys know, our office provides technical assistance to small businesses, and I was
asked to come up with some training materials to offer to our small businesses, some training classes, some workshop classes that we can offer to small businesses and to independent businesses. Right now, we're doing a survey that we're actually sending to all of our small downtown businesses, and even businesses which are not necessarily in the downtown, to get information from them, to see what kind of training classes they would be interested in receiving. So far, we, the respondents are saying they want to see employee trains, and they're interested in things like conflict resolutions, because most small businesses are not getting that kind of training. They're interested in seminars that concern legal issues, they want to know how they can actually protect their business and their environment as well. They're interested in drug testing, drug-free workplace training, those kinds of trainings. We actually have about 150 surveys that will be going out through the month of September, and once we retrieve this data, we will start working on a regimen to actually provide to these small businesses. We anticipate training workshops to start next year, probably around the first of the year, so we will, I'll actually give you guys an update as the information becomes available. I will actually leave surveys on the back desk for those of you who are interested, actually emailed it to all of you guys last week, but if there are any small businesses in here who's interested in participating in that training regimen, we can make that information, and they will point you as well. Are there any questions?
Christian, thank you. We know you're doing great job with it.
If they want to pick up the survey, but rather than here, where can they pick it up?
They can actually come to the Waltham Station, our office is right behind the Police Department at the Waltham Station, or I'll leave my email address, and I can email it. We actually have some businesses prefer to fax it back, they want to actually fill it out in the company of their own environment, so you can actually fax it or email it to us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, La Christiane.
Mayor, can I take a couple minutes to use for that?
Well, it's not on, it's not on the order here.
It's a privilege here. We have a 7:30 legislative breakfast anymore, state legislature, you're in the morning for breakfast. As you know, we've been asked to get rid of all our excess gun performance surplus that we sell, bid to give back from the weapons that have been brought, which is just a relief. And then on the LME resourcing process, they've all been completed, that's Woodville Road, Abbey Drive, Urban Street, Maple Street will be completed as soon as we're replacing waterline. There's an old two-inch waterline in Maple Street, and we should get started on that next week when the materials came into that. So, still update where we end up for long time, so. Can I make sure that this one was in the file?
I was just about to say, Larry. All right, we have another thing that we enjoy doing, we have Employee of the Month, and I'll write this down, will Derek Pilkington come down, please?
Ricky's going to brag on you, isn't he, Larry?
Yeah, I bet he is. Derek wants to get out of the one standing here, because for all the City Council, it's just. (Inaudible). Don't look at the first, I ain't gonna bust.
But Derek's on the front.
Well, go ahead. (Laughter).
I would like to brag on Derek, it's been about two years ago that he became supervisor in our recycling plant, W. Industrial Florida, and when he came in, before he came in, there were six employees in this department, and when he came in, things transitioned, he got promoted to supervisor, and there's three employees in that department which includes his cell. And I will have to brag on Derek, he has done twice the work, twice the production with the three people we did with. So I would just like to definitely thank Derek for his duties and his dedication to City of Tifton.
Employee of the Month, recognition of your outstanding work performance as we're giving above the young, and the mayor, the city council, and city manager, recognize Derek as Employee of the Month for all of his contributions. Congratulations. (Applause). We like all these nice things. Oh, and something ever even nicer, again, we're going to get a special presentation by one of our wonderful people, Ms. Frank Kitchens. If you'll step forward, she's going to talk about the presentation, the CDBG grant check for the senior senior expansion. Thank you, ma'am.
I have a few things here.
You need some help?
Good afternoon, everyone.
We got some.
And this is the biggest check I've ever held in my hand, and I was just so excited, I took pictures all the way down 95. But, anyway, some mayor cater, councilman, on behalf of the City of Tifton, I would like to present to you the $500,000 grant from the Community Block Grant that we received for the renovation and expansion of the Leroy Rogers Senior Center.
Oh.
I am very, very excited about this because it's going to give us seniors something to do, more activities, it's going to be able to have our expansion of a larger assembly room, additional spaces for art space, community computer lab, media lab, a medical space for informal meetings, and additional parking and drainage improvement. So we are just very excited to see this project finally come to fruition, and hopefully we'll have a ribbon cutting in the near future. I believe Ms. Rhona has some information now, am I just going to the next recommendation?
I think she has another item we have to.
That was the first item.
Yes, yes, also the presentation of the stamp recommendation for the Tifton.
Yes. As you may know, over the past few months, Carla, Rhona, and myself have reviewed over 50 applications for the theater manager's position. That was a heavy task and a serve. We also interviewed an independent company as well, and the council, I've already given you detailed recommendations on these facts, but these are the following interviews and recommendations as suggested. We interviewed a harvest group, which is an independent firm. We also interviewed Mr. George Moreto from California, and we interviewed Mr. Martin Markle, and it is our recommendation at this time that we just saw this stay status quo with me serving as interim manager and my staff, and also hiring Mr. Mark Markle from Tallahassee as our marketing, production, and show consultant. Mr. Markle has agreed to do this free for us for six months, about seven months. So he's already working with me, he has great background, his work include his, let's see here, he has so much, but his resume, website, interview, both Skype and personal, and his full-fledged portfolio highlighted show proof of what his past work and future work details for us. He's one of our strongest candidates, he comes to us with great enthusiasm and high energy. He's already laid out a work plan for us, so he's got us running already. We're planning for November 9th, we already got that as a grand reopening date, and he has contracted for us Mr. Marvin Goldstein, a renowned pianist who just traveled around the world, and he was able to get this performance at a very, very low rate. So we're already seeing progress, and we haven't paid him a dime, so. That is our recommendation as for Mr. Mark Markle of Tallahassee, Florida, and you all have copies with the recommendations in full detail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it, Frank. Hey, anytime we hear free, those are our players, full of the words. Man, that's a great, can't beat that. Okay, we're going to move on now to the citizen input, and I believe you said there wasn't anybody, is that why, or?
Unless someone's come in since then. Not unless someone has come in since I did.
Do I need to ask? Is there anyone out there that wants to come up, citizen input, we'll give you five minutes? You don't always put the thing up there and say, any of them. Okay, seeing nobody? We'll go ahead and pass that. We need the approval of the minutes now for the approval of the minutes for August the 5th regular meeting, August 22nd workshop and call meeting, and the August 28th called workshop.
I'd like to motion to approve the August 5th regular meeting, it's August 22nd workshop and August 28th called workshop.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay. Now, we're going to go into a consent agenda, and for you in the audience that have heard you say this, it'll be your first time, y'all, to have, just don't listen to me. But we get to a consent agenda, that's the way for us to flow through the meeting when we come to court, we want to deal with the things that are interesting to y'all. We pile all these things into consent agenda, we can do it with one vote, because we've had a workshop, we've had emails, we've had discussions. So all this has been previously spoken about, talked about, and now it's time to vote on it. But what I'll always do is ask the council, if there are any of these consent agendas that are listed here, if anyone wants to take out of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I do need to be recused from consent agenda item number five, the resolution for the air president, how was it called when that real estate was activated?
Can we do this, rather than like to walk out? Can we just, can we take out number five from the consent agenda, and she can stay for the other consent, and then we'll do the five separate, and then that's the only time you have to walk out?
Yes, I think that.
That'll be the easiest, okay?
I can just take that out of number five.
So the motion needs to say that this is the consent agenda for items one through seven with the exclusion of five?
Correct.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of removing item five.
Second.
Our motion is second, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. And now, Ms. Judy, we'll handle the motion for the resolution number five. I'll accept the motion.
I move the resolution providing for the enterprise zone application for Harper Enterprises for the property located at 121 Central Avenue.
I need to make a correction on that, that's Tipton McNally Properties, it's not property.
Tipton McNally.
Yes, and the resolution does say Tipton McNally.
Is that his property?
Yes, it is. We're so used to like in Harper Enterprises.
Yeah.
Second.
I've got a motion, I've got a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit in the right hand, say aye.
Aye.
At best, by three votes. Do you ask Ms. Julie to come back in, please? Okay. While, while Julie's coming back in, it looks like we're making a pretty good time, but I've got to, got to tell you, one of my closest friends in life, Harold Chambers, lost his dad, Ralph. That visitation starts at six and goes to eight, so if we get real long and drawn out here, I'm going to get up and leave. So, just give you, fair enough. We're coming now to the point of ordinances. We have an ordinance providing for amendments to the, what are you supposed to be reading now, Mr. Turner? She want me to read? Ordinance providing for amendments to the Land Development Code with regards to vehicle sales establishments.
I move the adoption of this ordinance.
Second, ma'am.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion?
You need to recuse yourself.
Yes, you did, I'm sorry.
Oh, that is the one, okay. Sorry about that, Julie. Let's go ahead and repeat the whole thing again, that one's just out. Start back with the motion, please, ma'am.
I move the approval of the ordinance providing for amendments to the Land Development Code with regards to vehicle sales establishments.
Second, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit in the right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Okay, ordinance providing zoning change from R-10 to Mobile Home Park for property located on South College Circle and owned by Travis Hurst to be included with South College Circle Mobile Home Park. Do I have a motion?
I motion to table it as the our next committee to have one to do there.
I think we have a special call meeting on the nineteenth, we're all prepared. We could table the special call meeting on the nineteenth, second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit in the right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was unanimous. Item ten, repeal of chapter six alcohol ordinance and providing for a new chapter six of the alcohol ordinance.
The only thing that I want to mention is that Councilmember Harrod had requested a summary, sort of a little cheat sheet for licensees, and I did put that in there, just the allocation of that. And I did try to explain that it was not only inclusive, it's important for them to read the document.
And I requested that, because a lot of business owners, you know, may not want to go through fifty-nine pages to figure out what they need to do, need to comply with, and I think it's captured, so.
Okay, is we in motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we repeal the chapter six alcohol ordinance and provide for the new chapter six as submitted.
Second, ma'am.
I've got a motion, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit in the right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. The nineteenth of September?
That's our regular workshop.
Okay, that is a regular, I thought you said a special call workshop.
We have a regular workshop, but we have a special call meeting after the workshop.
We have to approve our block grant to get it back to four.
Okay, we'll get all that info out, and then this will mind it, it's okay, good. Okay, other business, and that is the appointment to the Tifton Board of Elders. I had set out something, Ms. Rora, just to everybody who's been on this week, right? This is a special, did you know, normally, when we put somebody on the board, it's our board, and we give them the oath of office here, all that. This is a little different, this is a special, person with special degrees and so forth, and someone who's willing to come in and sit on the board. Y'all will remember Ms. Mary Smith, Mariana, Mary Smith was on that board for many, 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 many years, but you remember Mary. So this, this lady, I called one other that never called me back, and this was a lady I called. She, she works up at the school, is she here tonight? She works up at the school as the head nurse. Name is Tammy Moody.
Tina Moody.
Tina, Tina Moody, Tina Moody, and she comes highly, um... Recommended, thank you. Singer, singer thing going on. She, she will take, you know, that might lose.
Who's she taking?
Whose place is she?
April Dees.
April Dees. Who's, who's leading, because she got a job up in Chris County, and so. Oh, yes, that's what I had, okay, right, and she will be serving out the remainder of that six-year term through December thirty-first to twenty-sixteenth. And she came highly recommended, she's been okay, as y'all can see, a couple of people in the school board and with the superintendent. And she's willing to do it. So I guess at this time, I'll accept the motion.
I make motion to appoint the, that the Tammy Moody to the Tifton Board of Elders?
Second.
I've got a motion, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please sit in the right hand, say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Charlotte said to let her know, you'll let her know, and I'll also email her and tell her it's unanimous, that I think she has to get with the Suzanne, Suzanne has to swear her in and all that good stuff. All right, well, this may go pretty quick.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel, real estate, and all of the matters.
Second, ma'am.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please sit in the right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Let's wait about five minutes, every time, everybody's time to get out. See, you, you two potential guys, y'all, y'all got here, and that's what made us work hard.
Yeah, we're glad to have you.
Set a good example for you.